Comprehensive Plan/ Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. The goal of the special board was to develop a Village of Cold Spring Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. The first step in achieving that goal was to develop a comprehensive plan for the Village of Cold Spring. The plan was in fact developed by the special board and adopted by the Village of Cold Spring in January, on January 12th, 2012. The second step was to create a Local Waterfront Revitalization Strategy. That document was completed in November 2011. The last step was to create a Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan, an LWRP. That document was completed in 2014. However, the New York State Department of State, which is required to accept or approve that, did not because in their view that it did not contain the required zoning items that needed to be addressed. So, to address those topics, the village obtained a grant from NYSERTA, which is the New York State Energy and Research Development Authority, in 2014 to address the 29 code topics and formed the Code Update Committee in October 2014 to evaluate each of the 29 topics and determine what, if any, changes were required to the village code. In 2015, a grant was also obtained from the Hudson River Valley Greenway. The Greenway grant will be used to fund some of the work of updating the code. The Code Update Committee completed their evaluation on the 29 topics while conducting five separate public hearings, public meetings. In each of the five public meetings, a set of topics was discussed along with the CUC's recommendation on each topic. The CUC presented their findings to the Village Board of Trustees in December 2019 and at that point turned over their work to the village board. The village board began discussing the CUC's recommendations in December 2019. Village Board of Trustees activities were suspended during the COVID shutdown in April and resumed in June of 2020. Once the village board completes the series of public hearings on the code update, this will set the stage for completion of the Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. And that's the story behind the code update. The code update has brought the village's code up to the present time and establishes a strong base for future modifications and improvements to the village's set of local laws. Now for the numbers, I'm a numbers person. There are currently 42 chapters in the village code. 12th of these chapters will require no changes. The code update project will repeal one chapter, shopping carts, add six new chapters, short-term rentals, fences and walls, steep slopes, outdoor lighting standards, waterfront consistency review, and unsafe buildings. And the code and the village board will recommend changes to 36 chapters. It all told thus far as of June 30th, the village board had devoted 52 meetings to the code update between December 2019 and June 2021. Tonight, 11 of those chapters will be the subject of the public hearing. All of the materials associated with each chapter have been available on the village website since June 30th. Each of the members of the village board will describe the changes to a specific chapter. The village website contains for each chapter that is being reviewed tonight, the current version of the chapter, the proposed version of the chapter, a red line version of the chapter, and a comparison between, sorry, the red line is a comparison between the current and the proposed. And in addition, there will be found on the village website, a description of the changes to each chapter. Tonight, the village board looks forward to your comments and suggestions to these 11 chapters. If each of you would sign in on the sign-in form, which as it turns out is required by NYSERTA to receive our grant money, so I'm just not making this up, we have to do this. We look forward to your suggestions and comments. And once again, this is the financial plug, this work has been funded by a grant from the New York State Energy and Research Development Authority and by a grant from the Hudson River Valley Greenway. And so with that, I'll turn the meeting over to Tweeps to talk about Chapter 5.
Sure. So, we're going to just describe the changes that were made to Chapter 5, which is the Community Choice Aggregation Chapter. Many of the changes are actually grammatical and changes such as an "all start." So, these are the description of changes. Changes to conform to code chapter conventions, e.g., chapter to capitalized chapter, so capitalizing the first letter of any word or term in definitions, et cetera. Grammatical corrections are correction of CCA Administrator definition, correction to in default Consumers definition with the addition of selected supplier, correction to definition of ESCO or Energy Service Company by amplifying the definition of an Energy Service Company. 5.5A, I'm sorry, 5.5, A Modified to Provide the Name for Acronym APP. 5.8A identifies the organization responsible for filing the annual report. So, those are in sum all of the changes that were made to Chapter 5.
At this point, does anyone have any questions or comments on Chapter 5? Okay. Then we'll move on to Chapter 9.
Chapter 9 is the, the chapter on Ethics. Chapter 9 has been totally rewritten to conform to New York State Department of State Model Code of Ethics. So, basically, the chapter is all renewed, written to conform to New York State standards. And that's the entire change of Chapter 9. So, I'm good with that.
Comments or questions on 9? Okay.
Okay, next is Chapter 21, Planning Board. Words were changed to pronouns, I guess to gender neutrality. Grammar corrections, corrected references to the correct village law of the state of New York throughout the chapter. 21-1, added method of appointment of members, length of terms, commencement of term, and conditions for end of term and vacancy appointment. 21-2, corrected to describe appointment of chairperson and added role of acting chairperson. Added 21-3, alternate planning board members. 21-4, deleted requirements for planning board to refer decisions to the village board, remove expiration of approvals. And finally, 21-8, which was the old 21-7, clarification of referral process.
Questions or comments? Then we'll move on to alarms. Chapter 32 is alarms. And the changes that were made to Chapter 32 were to conform to code chapter conventions, for example, capitalize the first letter of the word, in the word "chapter," and in the text, capitalize the first letter of any word or term in the definitions. Other examples would include to state both the numeric representation and the alphanumeric representation of any number that is used in the text. The chapter has been made gender neutral. The change, the definition of EMS was changed to be generic. The chapter was changed to add the code enforcement officer as having the same responsibilities and authority as the fire inspector. 32-5 was modified to move all fees to the master fee schedule and to reference such schedule. Also listed all the building types for which fees are required. 32-20 was modified to refer to the master fee schedule and state that fees can be modified by resolution of the Village Board of Trustees. Any questions or comments on Chapter 32?
I think we should, in some of the chapters where we've moved stuff to the master fee schedule, that is so we can change them more easily during, or a board can make them more easily during the year without having to go to public hearings and...
That's true, yes.
So, it's the main reason if you see that change, that's so they can be changed easier.
Okay. Chapter 40 is Building Construction. This chapter has been rewritten to conform to the New York State Department State Model Code for Building Construction with modifications to reflect the Village of Cold Spring. Any questions or comments on Chapter 40? Okay, Tweeps back to you.
Okey dokey. Chapter 45, dogs. The following are a description of the changes made to 45. Changes to conform to code chapter conventions, e.g., capitalizing the first letter of chapter to chapter in the text and capitalize the first letter of any word or term in definitions. Definition of owner changed to be more precise and thorough. 45-3, changed to control of all dogs, not just unleashed dogs. 45-3 changed wording to be more user-friendly. 45-4 changed licensing from presumptions and to reflect municipality issuing licenses. 45-6 changed to reflect updated penalties.
Any comments or questions? Karen!
Stop, right. In the section on the code about the dogs where it says run at large, and it says a person has to be responsible to be able to control it by command, or, and it just leaves it open, can we take the command part out? Because people think they have command control over their dogs until they don't. And it happens a lot. People let their dogs run around, and they try to call them back, and they see another dog, and they don't come back. So, the Phillips Town Code has it as they can't be unleashed off your property. Doesn't have anything about command in it.
Thank you, Karen.
So, if I'm in the village, I kind of want to know. And I'm assuming since I'm the dog controller for Phillips Town that I do take care of the village?
Yes.
Okay. Because someone told me that I did not, because they lived in the village and I work for Phillips Town, so, just want to clarify.
Yes.
Karen, do you know what section that... Yeah, it's 45-3A1, runs at large. I'm sorry, above that, the definition section, run at large in the definitions, it says by command. That's all, I just want to take that part out.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, can I make one other question?
Of course.
Who do we call for keeping the dogs on the leash at Seana Hudson? Do we have a contact person specifically to put up signs down at the boundary, or is that part of the village? Because people let the dogs run around.
Down the West Point boundary?
Yeah.
That part?
Yeah.
It's a...
It's not part of the village?
Yeah, that's all ours.
What's that?
That's all in the village.
It's in the village, yeah.
So, I do have authority to tell people to leash their dogs down there?
Yes.
And dockside as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because I was told that...
Dockside right now is, we're leasing from the state.
Okay. People think that because I'm the Phillips Town Controller, so I can't tell them what to do in Nelsonville or in Village of Cold Spring. So, we're, yeah, I'm going to send an email to Mayor Bowman as well to clarify that.
And in fact, I think you'll see in Chapter 45 that we do reference that the municipality that issues the licenses is Phillips Town.
Yes, I read that part. And then also the enforcement, it just says police officers, but it does have, it does make reference to me, but the enforcement part just makes reference to the police officers. So, I'm assuming that I can still enforce, even though it doesn't say it in the code enforcement section specifically.
I've noted that as well, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
I don't have my glasses on, is that Rebecca in the back?
Yeah.
Could you sign in?
Okay.
And there's a handout.
Sure.
Hiding behind a mask.
I am, I am.
So old.
Okay. Next is 47. Sorry, Karen, I think your comments are very valuable and will enhance the chapter, so thank you very much.
Yeah, on a different subject, if we can get signs somewhere in those places, I don't know who is in charge of every sign, but that would be helpful too. It's not really a code thing, but it would just be helpful. Not that anybody's going to listen to it, but...
Signage for having your dog on a leash?
Yeah.
I know, we were actually discussing that command section. We'll talk about it later, but I know we, that sounds really familiar.
Yeah, I did canine training, and my dog came back on command 95% of the time, so not every dog's perfect.
Hi, whoever you are, can you sign in? And there's a handout here.
Thank you.
Hi, Irene.
I apologize for being late, everybody. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see anybody. Okay, Chapter 47.
Okay, Chapter 47 is the chapter on return checks. And the changes that we made, first of all, the changes to conform to chapter conventions, for example, capitalizing the first letter of the word "chapter" in the text and capitalizing the first letter of any word or term in the definitions. We moved the fees and service charges out of the chapter into the master fee schedule in multiple places. And we removed the term Chief Financial Officer from Section 47-5.
Any comments on return checks?
47, that's on the, 57.
Next, 57. Reimbursement of Professional Consultants' Expenses.
There it is, Chapter 57. Changes made, changes to conform to code chapter conventions. Examples, chapter changed to capital, capital C. Chapter, capitalizing first letter of any word or term in the definitions. Add Schedule A to the index, reformatted Schedule A to table format. Added steep slope permit to list of land use applications requiring compensation. Added appropriate qualifications to certain terms that will give in final approval instead of approval. Added tree advisory board to list of boards and modified the conditions under which guidance is sought on a land use application prior to formal submission to a board.
Any questions or comments on 57? Okay. The next one is Chapter 71. Chapter 71 is Licensing. And this is probably a chapter where there were lists of things that were in the chapter before that have been removed. For example, hawking and pedaling used to be in the chapter. That's not a term that we use today, nor is it an activity which people take part in. Street exhibitions was in the chapter before, it has been removed. So, to give you more specifics, we have added sections on purpose and authority, definitions, license to solicit required. We've changed almost all of the license types in Chapter 71 to a license to solicit. That tends to be what we encounter, we as residents of the village encounter in today's environment, whether it's someone approaching your front door to clean your chimney, or someone providing you with less expensive and more energy efficient windows. That now requires a license to solicit. We have added a section on solicitations on sidewalks and outdoor sales fees, application for a license to solicit, that's a new, that's a new item. Criminal check, criminal history check for a license to solicit, is now required. Issuance of licenses is a new section. Exemptions, permitted hours of solicitation, prohibited activities, another new section. Persons and conditions ineligible for licensure, suspension or revocation of license, enforcement, and penalties for offenses. As previously mentioned, we have removed hawking and pedaling, shows and exhibitions, sales at auction, issuance of licenses, construals of provisions, street exhibitions, revocation of permits, and changes to fees. Some of the content that used to be in those sections have been moved to a newly named section. So, the changes include, we've added definitions, we've eliminated situations and conditions that no longer occurred and address current situations and conditions. We moved fees to the master fee schedule, as Dave had mentioned. We've clarified the requirements for licenses. We've identified ineligibility for licenses. We've defined times when soliciting can and cannot be conducted. We've identified conditions for revocation or suspension of licenses. And we have increased the penalties. That's the, those are the changes to Chapter 71. Any questions or comments? Okay, this one will be a relief after that long list. Description of changes to Chapter 118, which is taxation. This chapter has been rewritten to reflect the fact that village taxes are levied on the town of Phillips Town tax roll. That's it. In the past, this chapter went into detail as to how a person could apply for an exemption, what real property they owned, what real property they owned in concert with someone else, and it identified the percentage of exemption based upon those conditions. As it turns out, the village gave up assessing responsibility to the town approximately 20 years ago. When it did that, the town established their tax roll and their exemption requirements, which can be found in the Phillips Town Code. They've established their tax roll and their exemption requirements to qualify a property in the Village of Cold Spring for exemption for the village's tax base. So, what this does, as Kathleen indicated, it's a very simple chapter, it's one sentence. It says Phillips Town Tax Rolls. Any questions on that? Any comments? Okay, last one. Tweeps back to you.
Chapter 127, Residential Parking Program. The description of changes. Changes to conform to code chapter conventions, changing chapter to capitalized chapter, the first letter of any word or term in definitions. Modified 127-1 to west of Metro North Commuter Railroad. Added 127-2 to describe additional streets in residential parking program east of Metro North Commuter Railroad and the terms and conditions of the residential parking program east of the Metro North Commuter Railroad. Fees have been moved to the master fee schedule. Changed village to a capitalized village. Added New York to vehicle and traffic law.
I think we should clarify the newer streets and how that is in the law.
I thought it was. Let me just go to bear with me. Chapter 127. Chapter 127 is the residential parking program. Established in 2005 was the residential parking program west of the Metro North Railroad tracks. In 2015, New York State Legislature approved the addition of 11 additional streets, they are listed, to a residential parking program east of the Metro North Railroad. They include Stone Street, Railroad Avenue, Cross Street, Garden Street, Church Street, High Street, Howland Street, Northern Avenue, Rock Street, Campbell Avenue between Main and the intersection with Wall Street, Rock Street, and Furnace Street. Those 11 streets are part of the residential parking program east of the Metro North Railroad. So, what has happened in this chapter is the residential parking program east of the Metro North Railroad has been identified and laid out.
But I think for clarification, it isn't yet law. We haven't implemented that.
We haven't implemented, but it has been, it has been law since 2015.
It has been law, but it hasn't been implemented.
Correct.
So, just for everyone to know, it hasn't been implemented, it has to go to the Secretary of State in order, you know, first we have to have the public hearings and go through that, so...
This is the public hearing on changing the chapter.
I know, but I think that if I'm confused, someone else might be confused.
You think?
Maybe, yes.
So, what Dave is saying is that the specific implementation of the parking spaces on those 11 streets will be reflected in Chapter 126, Vehicle and Traffic. And that has not yet been brought forward for a public hearing.
Right. And also, I'm sorry, we'll jump in. Some of the recommendations from the parking committee, and that has, those have not been incorporated. This just basically says we do have a law that says we can, we can have parking permits in this area, but how we're going to do it comes from the parking committee and then to 126, and those really haven't been set yet. 126, the parking committee is meeting with us again, we're having another public...
They haven't set a date yet. So, Chapter 127 enables you to then pass 126?
Yes.
Yes.
126 is the chapter that gives you all the backs and forth and right, which streets are on way and which aren't, which streets are parking on one side, which don't. And a lot of that depends on what the parking committee recommends. But you can still, you can still give your references and your recommendations, so feel free.
Any questions or comments on Chapter 127?
So, at this moment, we're free to say we like or dislike something about 126, or is this not the appropriate time?
We haven't, we haven't...
You haven't passed it?
Correct.
So, it's not a good time to comment about it?
Well, certainly, we appreciate your input, so please go ahead. Seriously.
As the mayor said, if he's confused, so are we. There's many people on High Street that are opposed to the direction that traffic is proposed to flow on Howling. And so, right now, it has it coming from 90 towards High Street in your proposal, and many of us feel that that is not the most correct solution to that issue.
Right.
So, I don't like the direction that you guys are proposing for.
And we have the letter that is sent and signed, and the latest, latest position from the parking committee is to leave it as a two-way street and put parking on one side only, which addresses the ability of emergency vehicles to get through the street and then does not affect, doesn't change the parking, sorry, the driving directions.
We went out with a tape measure two nights ago to compare Northern to Howling, because Northern will have only a part of, in two lanes of traffic. And we just discovered that Howling is the same size and we need to accommodate that too, so, okay, thank you.
Great.
There's also additional recommendations for signage and stop painted on pavement. So, that's to come.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on these 11 chapters or any of the other chapters that we're working on?
I don't think we should go into the other chapters, I think we just, this is what, the public hearings for these chapters, and we're in a public hearing for these chapters.
Okay.
That's what we should stay.
So, in the absence of any other comment...
Sorry, question, clarifying question. What if, what about bringing up parking on a different street that is not in the central village? Would that be inappropriate? I'm thinking of Academy Street between 301 or Main and Paulville. And it's, when there's cars parked on both sides, an emergency vehicle cannot get down. And then when there is parking closer to 301, is a very odd, difficult turn, and there is a stop sign. So if you're parked at the stop, if you're stopped at the stop sign and there's a car parked illegally on the other side, I guess it would be on the west side of the street. You know, I'm on that street a lot, and minivans dropping those kids off at daycare, they go whipping around, you know what I mean? And or like a oil delivery truck has to like do this giant maneuvering to get down the street regularly, but the street is narrow, double sided parking or, it's, it's dangerous, it's dangerous. Now, here is, is that for the Parking Committee? Is that for One-twenty-six? Is that for a different...
I'll say it's for One-twenty-six.
The Parking Committee is focused on the eleven streets and Main Street, so it would be a comment for Chapter One-twenty-six.
Okay.
And I think I've mentioned that.
Yeah, because you were...
I know exactly who you're talking about.
It's a fire hazard, I mean, like, it, it's not fires, to be, an emergency vehicle cannot get down that street if anybody is parked double sided, and nobody has exclusively, you know, a Volkswagen Rabbit anymore. It's all giant SUVs, it's all minivans, it's, uh, so, the parking, uh, and again, I haven't, I'm friendly with the people that live on, um, the east, the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of the street. They don't use their driveway, they don't use their garage for car. They, so they park in front of their house, which is what they should be doing, but when it was on the three oh one side, that used to be designated handicap parking for the gentlemen that lived there, and so no one could park right in front of that house. You could clearly see if you were going to look both ways, you know, when you're going to try to get out of Academy that way. But if there is a, even a, a station wagon, you cannot see until they're past that. It's also a crossing road. There is, um, crosswalk on one side, and I think from three, on the west side of three oh, of, you know, to, uh, three oh one, and then on the other side on the library is on Fishkill Side. But there's not stop signs. You, you know, it's a dangerous corner, and it's one that pedestrians take so long, kids take all the time. And it's not, it is not realistic to rely on drivers being aware that they're supposed to politely stop, uh, if you see somebody standing on the corner. Um, it's, it's dangerous, and I, I see it constantly because I live there. And, um, I'm suggesting somehow to update the area or create new, add stop signs, which is extremely unpopular on three oh one, uh, because it's a, a crosswalk there, or add crosswalks or something, I don't know. I'm just, I guess I'm bringing it up to your attention, I could come up with my own plan, my own suggestions, uh, but I'm glad Dave brought it up. Uh, it's, it's quite obvious if you're even there for a little bit to see it.
Thank you, Irene.
Well, do we want to, do we want to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry, you're right. You want to adjourn the meeting?
Well, we can, we can close the public hearing, and we can, well, let me finish, please. We can close the public hearing on everyone except for Chapter Forty-five, where we can make, discuss changes that were brought up. Since there were no other comments brought up on any of the other chapters, Jeff has put resolutions together for either tonight or future, and I think we could close the public hearings on the other chapters.
Or we could leave them all up until Tuesday.
Yes, I suggest that we close them, and, uh, except for Chapter Forty-five. How does the other board feel?
I guess, I agree.
Okay, that's okay?
Yes.
So we have to go through each one of these, um, and, and we would close each one? You have that?
Um, not, we opened it up as one public hearing, so we could close it as one public hearing and make the exception for the one chapter.
Okay, do it that way, as a resolution, or just as a motion?
As a motion.
Okay. I will make a motion that we close the public hearing, um, for Chapters Five, Nine, Twenty-one, Thirty-two, Forty, Forty-seven, Fifty-seven, Seventy-one, One-eighteen, and One-twenty-seven. We have a second from Kathleen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Marie?
I prefer to leave it open.
So there's a no from Marie. Okay, motion passes, uh, those chapters are closed. The Chapter Forty-five on Dogs, we will take those comments into consideration. Thank you all for coming, and, uh, this was the easy chapters. We'll, we won't be smiling the next time.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
You guys have a busy week, definitely with all your meetings.
It's a big wait, I know.
Thank you.
Have we closed the meeting or just the hearing? You need to close the meeting, I'll close the hearing.
Yes, we do. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
There were four seconds on that one.
All in favor?
Aye. That's why I was saying, and I agree.